Joining us tonight for the Pledge of Allegiance are Robert Jean Glenn and Michael Francis Hein. Robert, a fifth grader, and Michael, a fourth grader, both students at Reimer CLC are brothers. Their principal, Becca Cassioppo, tells us that they are two of the finest youngsters. They always maintain a character of kindness to others, do their very best every day at school, and help others because it comes naturally. Teachers Jennifer Hunter and Timothy Schuber agree that Robert and Michael are wonderful students who put others first on a daily basis. They are always willing to help out and they have a great attitude. Michael shows intense interest in social studies and science, and he is very polite. They all agree that it's a pleasure to have them as students at Reimer. Ms. Cassioppo shared a letter she received from their parents. It says, in part, "We, as parents of Robert Glenn and Michael Hein, would like to express our thanks to the Akron School Board and faculty for the learning opportunities and growth experiences offered to our sons. More importantly, as parents, we share a lot of pride in their accomplishments achieved at Reimer. Robert and Michael have both exceeded our expectations for leadership, learning, and emotional growth. The boys enjoy and take full advantage of all challenges offered by helping others, participating in after-school programs, activities, and sports." So, Robert and Michael, please join us, and everyone else, thank you. Hold on. One, ten, judge. Carry. Hold. Forward. Mark. Mark time. March. Color guard. Halt. Right. Face. Pose. Freeze that. Colors.
The United States of America and the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Order. Colors. Right. Face. Forward. Mark. Color guard. Halt. Order. Colors. Do you want to tell us maybe who you brought with you today?
I brought my, we brought our great-grandma, Sandy Lay, and our stepdad, Bob, our two brothers, Chandler and Alex, who currently go to this school, and our wonderful principal, Ms. Cassioppo.
All right, well, thank you so much for your help and doing the Pledge of Allegiance today. Please keep up the good work. We're so proud of you. All right, always exciting to see some of our students in action. We really are proud of them. That's a wonderful testimony. Thank you, Principal Cassioppo and your staff, for all that you do to help raise students like that. We appreciate that. All right, we are going to open it up at this time for community and school reflections from the board. Would anyone like to start?
I just have one quick, I went to a lot of amazing things over the last couple of weeks and probably, actually, I had two. One of them was this morning, I attended the presentation of the PBLs over at North High School for the fire safety. And it was just amazing to see what, this was one of the sophomore classes and the things they put together, the things they're trying to do to help get the word out about smoke detectors and having an exit plan and trying to avoid the problems that we have, we've been having in the community. So, I just want to congratulate them. I think it was an excellent program, and that's why I beat a pumpkin, and the students did a fabulous job, so I want to congratulate them. And then I also just wanted, I took a picture at, I was at the North Ellet game at Ellis on Friday, and the new scoreboard was up, and they were talking about it the whole time, but I just wanted, it was a collaboration sponsored by the University of Akron, Malone University, and Stark State, and they've got a little active screen on it, which will say "Welcome" or "Louder", or all the things to do to get the crowd going, and I just think it was a wonderful partnership, so I can pass that down. And there are actually two, there's only one screen with the graphics, but two definite boards that are much bigger and easier to read and very exciting. And I was talking to them at North today, and they said they have it, but it's not up yet. So, it's in the process of going up everywhere, and then they did a great job of advertising for advertisers during the game. I don't know if they got any, but they kept talking it up and saying "call", so that was just a nice touch to see it actually come to fruition.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I had the opportunity this past weekend to go to Hack-a-thon. And basically what that is, is the third time that the city of Akron has put the Hack-a-thon on. It's a group of hackers, and I'd say hackers in the good meaning of the word. These are people that are looking at systems for the city of Akron, and this one actually had also to do with the Akron Public Schools, part of it was anyways, and trying to figure out and look at solutions and break down barriers of the community getting into our community learning centers when the schools aren't utilizing the buildings. It was very interesting, and they were at, it was at the first energy campus where it was. They started eight o'clock in the morning, went until seven o'clock at night, and my understanding, that's sort of the time that was put in at the first two hacks as well. And they've actually developed a website, and it's going to be, they're going to share it with the Akron Public Schools and the city of Akron in the near future, and hopefully that's going to help, you know, some of the, help solve some of the barriers that some people are finding about getting into our buildings and utilizing them as community centers. Also had the opportunity to go to Brookfield High School, part of a PBL, I guess similar to probably what Debbie was at today at North High School. And it was a PBL, Problem-Based Learning. There was an exercise on looking at diseases and how it follows genes through a family and through merging, you know, two families through marriage and having children. It's very interesting to sit there. I got to act as if I was a parent or a husband sitting there with my wife, trying to decide if we wanted to have a child naturally because of different things in our genes that pointed to maybe if we had a child it would be inflicted with this family disease or not. The students were very engaging, and it was, it was a good two hours spent helping those students present their findings to people who come in the building and participate in that. That's all I have.
Thank you.
It is definitely project-based learning season. So, I was at Stowe just a few weeks ago and got to see presentations there, as well as with Ms. Walsh at North today. One of the things that I want to highlight also is I did get to volunteer last week to teach a project grad section to our college and career academies, our junior achievement, and that was at North High School. One of the things I wanted to talk about especially is, first of all, kudos to our staff because teaching a block, especially two back-to-back, is exhausting. And so, I had a renewed respect for how difficult it is to do that back-to-back, and I did have to restrict my fluids and do all kinds of crazy things so I could make it through that. So, great kudos to our staff for all that they do every day, but especially for their stamina, because that was just, it was great. One of the things that I noticed that I pointed out to the students that I don't think they hear enough is how incredibly, they had no idea who I was when I walked in the door. It's just a mother lady that was here to teach a segment from Junior Achievement. So, it wasn't, you know, respect due to office or respect due to anything. It was just respect, and they were, there wasn't a child that, a student that walked between the teacher and I that didn't stop and excuse themselves for interrupting our conversation or duck our needs or go around. Every single one of them said hello or greeted me as they came in the door. And these were freshmen, and these were students who, you know, we hear all these things about, you know, our kids are this or our kids are that. Our kids are fantastic, and they were lovely, lovely human beings, and just a great group to teach. They did have some building questions about North, and they'd love for us to come out and talk to them about that, so I told them that I would come back. Also, just going back a little bit farther, I just wanted to also point out, Mr. Miller and I did get to go to Bridges, and I don't think we got to talk about that because we kind of truncated our community and school reflections at our last meeting. And just wanted to give a shout-out to that staff as well. We were out there right before Thanksgiving, and I can't tell you, again, how thankful it made me for our staff and our students and for everyone who works for Akron Public Schools for what we got to see that morning for breakfast. Also, just a quick reminder to board members, I know that Ms. Solomon loaded our calendars with the arts calendar last week. There are fantastic things going on almost every night. If you, you know, you could just not pay for internet for the next couple of weeks and just go to sporting events and arts events, and your life will be very satisfactory. So, you better mind this, we're going toward it for the holidays.
A couple of things. One, our last meeting, the LeBron James Foundation took up so much time, and there was a little coke bottle that each one of us got, and I thought it was from LeBron James Foundation. I was going to call them and thank them, but what I found out, it wasn't from LeBron James Foundation. It was from our receptionist, Rhonda Black, who sits at the front and greets everyone who answers the phone. And I thought that was very nice for her to give us a bottle of coke personally, with our, personalized with our name on it, and I thought that was very nice. So, that needed to go recognized this evening, because we didn't know that last time. Several weeks ago, several of us went to Ohio School Board Conference, I'm sorry, Ohio School Board Association Conference, and there were various subjects that were going, various sessions, and I just wanted to talk about a couple of things. It's not going to take long. But there was one who went to the, we went to the Black Caucus Dinner, and there were a number of state leaders who participated, and there was, talking about kids who learn and how our kids can achieve. There was this wonderful young lady from Cleveland Municipal School District, outstanding. And I looked at her and listened to what she was saying and what was going on, and she did an outstanding job. But I know that we, here in Akron Public Schools, have kids like that. So, what I'm saying for us next year, I'd like to see some, one of our students go down and show, other than the students we had down there, be able to go and show their talent, because I think it's really nice to be able to show what your school district is doing and the good jobs that the students are doing. So, that was something that was very nice. It was nice to see our students who were down there, who traveled as well. A very, very good experience for them, an opportunity for them to be exposed to other facets, other school districts across Ohio. So, it was very nice, and our kids were very, very well. They did a very good job of greeting people, talking to people, explaining their projects. It was outstanding, so those are things I love, because now we're talking about Akron Public Schools. I know other schools do a good job, but Akron Public Schools has to be at the top. So, I want to thank our students and the staff who went down with them. There were a couple other, and I'm just going to kind of briefly highlight. There were a couple of sessions I went to. One was the Central Policies, and that was for 2018. They talked about the various policies that will affect the students in school districts in the year 2018. There was another one that was, it talked about the 10 Things About Living in Poverty, and that's a piece of like Bridges Out of Poverty, which is a very important piece for not just us as individuals, but also for the students, the counselors, and everyone to understand some of the various backgrounds that these kids come from, because the better you know, the better you understand their backgrounds, the easier it is to teach, because there's so many things that go on with kids that we have no idea. And they come to school every day to learn, and it's nice to have them come to learn, but we have to understand there's some other things that go on, and we can help them for that. And then the last thing, well, next to the last, I'm sorry. Thing I have is, they talked about, it was a group of young men from Canton City Schools, and they had a, they talked about a program, two young men from their district came down and talked about this program. It's kind of a mentoring program for young men, and they do, they did a very good job. The young men were very presentable, very impressive. And I actually got a chance to see them again here in Akron last Saturday, because they were playing at Firestone High School in a basketball classic. But they were still very respectful there. They still introduced, I'm surprised they remember who I was, but they introduced themselves again and said hello, so it was very nice. But I think that's something that we, here in Akron Public Schools, can do to help some of our kids as well. So, that's something we maybe need to look into. And last, the Athletic Committee, which I sit on, we had the opportunity the last couple of weeks to go to a couple of schools and have our meetings, and we were here at Kenmore Garfield last week. And it's very nice to be able to come in and talk to the students, and not just think about what we want, but hear their ideas, hear what they think about athletes, hear what they think about their colleagues and classmates. So, I was glad and proud. The athletic director here was very good. The kids were some good kids, and they were very bright. They had a lot of good ideas that I think we have to probably look at and listen to because they're the ones who are involved. So, those are the things I had the opportunity to participate in, and it's just a very good, a very good way to try to end our school year, a positive note before we begin a new year, a new year-year, calendar year, 2018, and working with our kids. Thank you, sir.
Anyone else? Okay. Then we have something very special we're going to take just a moment to do, to recognize one of our colleagues who very sadly will be leaving us at the end of this calendar year, and that is Ms. Walsh. Her new position does not allow her to continue serving with us the way that she has been, though I know that she will continue to serve Akron Public Schools and all of our kids and families. So, we want to take a minute just to recognize Debbie, and so I want to read this resolution of appreciation to Debbie Walsh, and this resolution doesn't quite, doesn't nearly capture everything that Debbie's contributed in the two years that she's been here. And I know that some of our board members have some things that they'd like to share about Debbie as well. Whereas Debbie Walsh successfully campaigned for a seat on the Board of Education in the general election of November 2015 to fill the unexpired term of a previous board member who had resigned. And whereas Debbie's term commenced in January 2016, and whereas Ms. Walsh played a significant role on the board, capably serving as co-chair of the Legal, Contracts, and Board Policy Committee during 2016, and co-chair of the Instructional Policy and Student Achievement Committee during 2017. And whereas Ms. Walsh served as the Akron Board of Education representative on the Ohio School Boards Association Board of Trustees during 2017. And whereas Ms. Walsh devotedly attended numerous meetings, events, celebrations held by schools and community support groups and our partners. And whereas Ms. Walsh served the Akron Public Schools with distinction and integrity, helping to facilitate an environment in which decision-makers could do their job effectively and efficiently, now therefore be it resolved by the Board of Education of the Akron City School District that on behalf of the entire Akron School community, sincere and heartfelt appreciation be extended to Debbie Walsh for her dedicated service to the Akron Public Schools, and that a copy of this resolution be given to Debbie Walsh, and that it be made a part of the permanent record of the Akron Board of Education. Ms. Walsh, thank you for your service. And I would like each of our board members to take a turn and share their appreciation with Ms. Walsh as well. Who would you like to start?
I kind of spoke with Ms. Walsh last weekend unofficially, and then I didn't know we were going to do this, but she was, has been one of the hardest-working board people that I've seen since I've been on the board. I have not seen any person try to learn as much as they could as she did, go to as many events and activities. I mean, it just amazed me. Ms. Walsh, you did an outstanding job. I enjoyed working with you. We'll really miss you because you're just dedicated, and that's what we need, is people to be dedicated for this district, so our students will be forward. So, thank you, thank you very much, and I guess I have something here for you. If I can hit it out. It's something I think you really like. I wanted to make sure you get it. You have the cup over there, so you can fill it up while you want, Miss Debbie.
So, we'll just keep going down the line. You're going to hear this a lot. From the very first week that she was elected, Debbie jumped right in and came to Capitol Conference. She jumped right in with all of us, and, you know, it's a pretty steep learning curve right off the bat, and she never skipped a beat. She, I think, attended every committee meeting that anybody held, whether she was on that committee or not. She sat quietly and listened. If she wasn't on the committee, if she was on the committee, she was always engaged, always involved. I don't know what I would have done without her for the last year with all of the work there was for instructional policy. She didn't get overwhelmed like I did when we were in Ellen's office, and she had all those things all over the wall, and she was terrifying us with all the work that there was to do. And always a very calm voice and always working for this city and for its children, and never seeking recognition. And it's just been a joy, and I always get emotional, so I'm excited. But I also have something for you. You know how important that is. So, we got to keep you on board. Thank you for everything you've done.
We will sorely miss your participation on the board. I think everybody agrees with that. I just want to share a little story. I remember when I ran for school board, and when I won school board, one of the first persons I saw the next morning was you. I was walking on the tow path, the tow path that's out on Merriman Road, on the sidewalks. I'm crossing the street, and this car comes pulling up as she's going to work that morning. So, I didn't know if I was going to make it to my first board meeting or not, but it was, and she was very, it was very kind. She stopped to congratulate me and all that, so that was fun. I still remember that, so.
I think there's a theme here.
To Sister Walsh, from basketball games to other activities in the life of being a board member, you have represented us well, and at every turn and everything that you've done. It has been a pleasure for me to serve with you, and to have your wisdom, your smile, your camaraderie, just the fellowship of your presence. And we know that you love the children of Akron, and you've demonstrated that by participating, equipping yourself, preparing yourself to meet the needs that are out there in the lives of our children. So, I congratulate you for this short period of time that you've shared as a board member, but the extended time as a community person that you've served in the life of this community and that you will continue to serve. And we know that you will be available if we need to bounce things off or to share, because that's the kind of person you are. I personally am grateful that I have this seat right next to you for the time that you've served on the board and to share in so many facets of what we have to do, minimize what it means to be a board member. And for you, sometimes when we are on the board, we think of things as, this is not a good thing, you know, nothing's being accomplished, nobody appreciates what we do. But you've accomplished so much in a short period of time, and I know you can see that what you've done has been worthwhile, and we know it's been worthwhile because we've been the beneficiaries of it. So, thank you, and like everyone else, we know and appreciate your work. We want to share this with you.
Well, Debbie, so one of the, I think one of the greatest pleasures I've had since I've been on this board is getting to know you, to meet you out on the campaign trail first, and then to get to serve with you and to get to know you as a person. It really has been a pleasure, and there's so much that goes into being a board member. I mean, there's the part that the community sees when you're out at the events and you're talking to people and you're getting feedback, and people are, you know, constantly coming up to you telling you how much they love you and how great we're doing and all of that kind of stuff. And then there's the, you know, the stuff that the public doesn't get to see, the hours that you put in to committee meetings and interreading notes and memos and Dear Board Member letters and briefs on all of the activities that are going on in Akron Public Schools, and you're forming opinions and thoughts on how you should react to that, and then coming back to the board and conducting the business of the board, which is looking out for the district and for the parents and the children and families that we serve. And you have handled all of that so remarkably well in such a short period of time, and it really has been a pleasure of mine, again, to get to know you, to spend time with you, to see your passion and your commitment. And I think everyone said it here, I mean, you had a front-row seat and were so instrumental in everything that we've done in the last two years, including the College and Career Academies and the Akron School. I mean, your work on that committee and the thought and the passion that you put into that to get us where we are is just phenomenal. And so, I too, now I have to say to Debbie, I have to make an apology, and to my board, I have to apologize. In some shocking news, I made my first mistake of 2018, or 2017, first mistake all year. We wanted to be thoughtful and get you something, so this is what we got you. And it's supposed to be Diet Coke, and I apologize for that. But anyway, you have now six of them, so maybe you'll convert. And I also have just a small token, just to say thank you for everything that you've done. You know how much we miss you. And we will help you carry this out.
That was a test, right, to carry it out? And you saved me from teasing her and going, "I was going to say they don't know me that well if they were getting me Diet Pepsi", but no. What they know is that I show up with this, so that would be the difference in it. But Diet Pepsi, Diet Coke, not that different. Thank you so much, and I have to say, I will truly miss everyone, but I may be off the board, but you've not rid of me yet, so. I got on the steering committee for the College and Career Academies, and that can be as a layperson, not as a board member, so I will still be around because I really am interested in future of this, and that's really why I ran, so. Thank you. It's been, it's been a fabulous experience for me, and if my job did not pre-include running, I would have run, so thank you.
All right, we are going to move to the Kenmore Garfield High School presentation with Principal Frank Lane. And I believe we need to leave.
Well, welcome, everybody, to Kenmore Garfield High School. I am AHS proud. I'm a graduate of Akron Public Schools, so happy to be in this position. So the first thing I like to do is, well, the ROTC, our Army ROTC, that was ours. They are awesome. They had their doing double duty tonight. They had to go over to the basketball game to do the cover card for that. So if you want to check out our scoreboards tonight, you can go over and check those out if you have time to catch a game afterwards. They're playing book though tonight. So I heard we're undefeated, they're undefeated, so it's gonna be a big game. But anyways, that was our ROTC. I'd like to recognize our student ambassadors. As most of you know, come on up here, gang. So as we move into College and Career Academies, one of the things, we want to get a little jump start, so we start training some of our student ambassadors just to be our ambassadors for Kenmore Garfield High School. So as you came in, hopefully, this was our first, kind of our dry run, first time doing this, so hopefully, they were helpful, pleasant, and everything we want in our students as graduates of Akron Public Schools. So anyways, so they do a good job. Did you guys... We're gonna continue to train them to be leaders in our community here at Kenmore Garfield High School and hopefully, they go on into greater things, okay? So thank you. I want to recognize you guys, okay? And Mrs. Bankley, who does this, this is extra, she's not paid to do it, but she leads the student ambassadors, one of her staff members. So, you know, she's staying here for free just because she loves Kenmore Garfield High School and she loves our kids. Okay, our mission statement. The mission of Kenmore Garfield High School is to prepare students for college and career goals. We are committed to creating an environment and a system of support to ensure all students are successful. So as I talk about Kenmore Garfield, I'm gonna kind of talk about everything, there's some of the things that we do around here. So I'm gonna kind of start back to June when we all started this journey with emerging schools and we'll kind of continue on from there. So... So here's some of our highlights. We have honors courses and all course content areas. And because of the merger, in some cases, we're able to have several classes in those areas. So that's both schools. We offer college credit plus. We have several students that are earning college credit this time. We have college English in our building through Stark State. In our language arts and math classes, we have support for all students that are below grade level. So we also call it a second touch, but all students are getting that support that come in below grade level. We have OST intervention courses with certified math and English teachers. So we offer five periods a day. If you read the papers, and they've adjusted graduation requirements this year, we're already looking to the future where our kids that are struggling in those OST tests, we're offering those interventions now. So hopefully, they will be prepared to hit that 18 points should things not change. The other good thing is we do staffed in with certified people. So not only are they working on their OST intervention, but if they need help with their current math, so if I'm in geometry, I need to retake that geometry test. I'm in Algebra II now. That math teacher can assist those in those areas too. So it really helps kids out. Credit recovery, so we have four periods of credit recovery during the day. So therefore, if kids get behind their credits, we can catch them up during the day. You know, our kids take, many of our kids take buses at the end of school day. We can't keep them after school, so we're trying to capture kids throughout our school day. We have enrichment periods during lunchtime staffed by content teachers. Now, we're a big school now, so now we have, we can maybe fit 200 kids in our cafeteria. So now I had to devise a way, and I did this last year at Garfield, but so we devise a way that lunch periods are split in half. And that way, kids can work with their computers now that we're one in the world during the enrichment period while the others eat lunch. And at first, what's really funny is, this goes back to, I've been down it for a couple of years now, but, you know, I don't have enough time to eat, Mr. Clay. Now, within 15 minutes, they can't wait to get out of there because they, you know... So kids don't need a lot of time to eat. They're ready to go and work on work or sometimes socialize. But anyways, so we do offer that during lunchtime. We have some ACT programs and we work with some community partners and do some things with kids so we can increase our ACT scores. We have CTAG, which is Closing Achievement Gap. So we have two staff members here dedicated to working with our freshmen who may be struggling. So they find those kids, we find those at-risk kids, and then we work with those kids. Senior project mentoring, so as we know, graduation requirements changed this year. So we have 35 of our staff members who volunteered to take on the job of mentoring some of our seniors. So as we look at the alternative pathway for graduation, our staff jumped right on board to help... Our staff jumped right on board to help seniors meet the requirements for this graduation pathway. And right now, is there any senior parents here who are in the middle of the testing? We have to make sure that they get all their tests in here this week because that's one of the requirements, that they take language arts and math, those tests, at least two times each. So, and then our student ambassadors, which you got to see. So those are some of our highlights. Some of our curricular education programs, so if you came through the main entrance, you saw some of those out there presenting, as well as our cluster schools, showing what they offer at their schools as well. But here at Kenmore Garfield, we offer business finance, construction technology, culinary arts, information technology, machining technology, marketing, project lead the way engineering, and our Army JROTC. So I know some of you came in hungry and you got to eat a little something on the way in, so that was nice for some of you, sure. All right, community partnerships. So we work with College Now, helps our kids with college access. We have Project Ujima, which helped us through the merger. We're right now going into phase three, where we're gonna have some of our kids leading some peace circles and doing some student leadership with our kids as we move through this journey. We work with pastoral counseling, I care mentoring. Akron Promise is new with us this year. We're gonna be working with them on not only mentoring, but some ACT stuff. Upward Bound, SWAG, which is Students With A Goal at Summit Lake, and Educational Talent Search. So those are some of our community partnerships that we work with. All right, so now I'm gonna just kind of go through some pictures here. So as we started our journey back in June, this is one of my better pictures. Sometimes I'm busy and I go, "Oh, I can get a picture of that." So I get my cellphone out and take the picture. But early on in June, we want to get kids over here to meet each other, start building relationships because that's really the key to us being successful here as we move forward. So in this case, we had our counselors work with kids and we had, this is not all the kids that came over. We brought over about, I'd say about 400 to 500 kids that day. This is just one of the small groups because we had meeting coaches in one place. We had some stuff going on in the auditorium here. But this is a case where we got kids together and we talked about, you know, what we like, what we have in common, what we don't have in common. And we found out that most kids, we all had a lot in common. So it gave us a chance just to talk and to bond as two schools coming together. So that's what we did in June. And then in the summer, we had our movie night. I put my famous, my apron on and I grilled for the kids and we had popcorn and we had a movie night. And I'd say about 100 kids, so it was just an opportunity, once again, before school started, to get kids together and build those relationships. And the kids absolutely loved it. I think the key piece too is we talked about staff dedication. We had over 30 staff members attend that night to assist, so, and they didn't have to be here in the middle of summer, but they were here. One of the things, we're big on student leadership. So you saw our ROTC, you saw our ambassadors. So anytime we do, like, our freshman orientation, we're gonna have students leading a lot of this. So this is one of our students, Leah Stanovich, who was talking about student council to the kids. So always, like I said, we try to do a lot of student-led activities with the kids and build those college and career skills for our older kids. First two days of school, we, you know, we just had the freshmen and then we had the freshmen and sophomores. So this was just an opportunity to talk about goal setting with our freshmen. So we want these kids, our freshmen, to be graduating 2021. So this is just like symbolic of something we did in our activity about goal setting. And then they got to make their cap with their graduation and goals on there. So that's posted in our hallways. Kenmore hasn't had a band last few years, so this merger allowed us to have a band over here with our kids. Some of the Kenmore kids were able to join. So our band, our band teacher, he kind of got this assignment two weeks before school started and he had the kids out ready to perform the first game. So kudos to him. But now kids are really taking advantage of some of our arts such as band, band orchestra, and our jazz band. So the kids, we had a nice concert, let's see, it was last week. So anyways, if you didn't get to see it, follow us on Facebook, @KenmoreGarfieldHighSchool. Got a Facebook page. I put some video on there, so. So one of the things we did before our first assembly, we got some funding to buy t-shirts for every kid in the school. So you see, they say, "Kenmore Garfield High School, we are one." So I would say 85% of our kids all wore the t-shirt that day for our first assembly. And you can see, this is an ROTC class. The whole class pretty much had a shirt on. So just, it was a good start there to have in our first assembly. And this is just the ROTC. You know, we're big on kids going out and doing community service. ROTC out during Veterans Day. This is our football team over at Forest for Fame Fathers Walk. Not every student may have a male that comes and shows up for Fame Fathers Walk, so some of our football players went over and we got to sit with kids and engage with them during their breakfast. So that was a, that was a good time and kids really enjoy it. And you've seen other articles of football team doing other things. They do a lot of other things just besides this. This is a picture I happen to have. Some of our kids for Project Rise, you see our kids behind the table. They helped out with Thanksgiving dinner, also helped out with some of the needs that the people had or pass them out to the tables. So this is another group of kids, just basic students under the guise of Ms. Perez here, who did this. So another great community service piece. So we talked about one in the world. So at this point, we're probably about 80-85% with kids having devices. Even before we had those, we had devices stocked in every room. So when we had, because we do, a lot of our teachers use Google Classroom and some of the technology pieces. So, but you see here, one of the classrooms, every kid's on a device and we're using this now as a part of our instruction. It's not taking over everything, but in this case, it's a great piece for kids to use. This happens to be their collection, so there's a lot of good resources in there for them to use. So now, we talked about the band. Now, one thing, when we were at Garfield, we didn't have a lot of the Utah plays and arts and things like that. So now, in the direction of Barb Bellamy, now our kids get to participate in some of the plays. So about three weeks ago, we had some plays and so these kids are getting opportunities they never had before. And they were funny. So they were fabulous. So this is, let's see. Something about zombies. I can't remember the name, but it was something about zombies. It was funny. So, but they do a tremendous job. So about three weeks ago, we have student recognition. Because some of the things, you get involved with being a principal and just the day-to-day stuff of kid stuff, you know, sometimes that gets in the way of some of the good things you need to do. So we make sure that every nine weeks, we do an award ceremony. And this is probably one, I'd say, this is a big turning point for us here at Kenmore Garfield because we got all the kids up there. You really can't see it, but we got every kid in there that's honor roll, merit roll, perfect tense. We got medals. And they were so happy and so proud to wear their medals around the school once we rewarded them. So this is a good day. We had Mr. Proctor, my assistant principal, was our guest speaker. Excuse me. And, but kids well behaved. They really appreciated it. So we reward kids around here, want them to know that what they're doing is important and we appreciate it. We reward staff too. So at my staff things, I, you know, hey, teachers work hard. They need to appreciate it too. So we do what we call the Ram Pride Award. They get a little pin and a certificate. So this is, for the first two months, these are our Ram Pride Award winners. This is, I talked about enrichment. Just, this is a kid, I go around occasionally, like I said, as a part of my evaluation, I have to go around and show that, you know, we are really working around here. And this is a kid using Quizlet Live during our enrichment period to practice on his amendments. So he knew what all the amendments were for his government class, so. We have College Now. So this is one-on-one FASFA. So as we try to get kids in classes during our interim reports, we'll have our College Now come in, work with parents so they can do their FASFA online right then and there with assistance. So that's something that we do here. This is construction, so kids down there working with the planer, just snapped a photo going through there. And our IT, this is, they go into classrooms. They do hands-on work here, even setting up classrooms for us around here. I know for our Chromebooks, they even set a lot of those up and did a lot of work prepping those because it was all hands-on debt. Machining, great program we have here as well. They're holding big checks because they got $22,000 in scholarships for their kids to use for their kids. So we do have 100% job placement with kids who lead machining here at Kenmore Garfield. We do bridge buildings. We talk about problem-based learning. So on Project Lead The Way, this is one of the things he does yearly where kids go and build bridges, see how much weight they can hold. Last thing is just student voices. And I didn't prompt these kids. These are their real, what they have to say.
Hi, my name is Iain St. Bailey. I was a Kenmore student for my freshman and I'm a senior. I like the merge. At first, I thought it was gonna be bad because two schools again put together. But as we got together through these months, I thought it was like, I like the teachers and it's a good thing for us because more students than I like less. And the teachers help them learn more than I did before.
Hi, I'm Randy Abisheli. I'm a sophomore this year and I went to Garfield High School. And what I think about the merge of Kenmore and Garfield is that it's not as bad as I thought it would be. It's just sometimes it could get crowded, but overall, I think it's a pretty good merge.
My name is Sirius Sibley. I'm a senior this year. I went to Kenmore last year. The merge has been, has been good. It's definitely different, but it's brought a lot of the good things to the school. Like, we have a new soccer team from Garfield that I'd like to be on this year. And I'm in choir, so like the choir is like bigger. We get to do more advanced songs and stuff because it's more people now. And the school's just overall, I'm just kidding, but like there's some, there's bads and there's good, but overall, it's just a good coming together.
My name is, my name is Markell. I am a senior at Kenmore Garfield High School. I'm originally from Garfield, but I'm here at the school now. At the school, it's been, it's been good, you know, besides all this stuff that's been going on, besides all the fights. But other than that, it's really not, it's really not bad for me. You got two schools coming together. I mean, you can't really expect it to be perfect. But same time, I'm having, it's my senior year. Actually, I have the term going here.
My name is Billy Carver. I'm a senior at Kenmore Garfield High School. I was originally from Kenmore High School and this year's merger has been, it's going smoothly and the aspect of kids getting along with kids from different schools and kids getting along with teachers. There, it's not perfect, but it's not anything to do with the schools merging together. That's just daily school life. But it's been fun this year.
My name is Madison Allison. I'm a junior and I came from Garfield High School. I feel like the merger has, it's been all right. I feel like the kids have gotten along pretty well. But I think the thing that bothers everyone is like the school spirit has decreased since we got here. I feel like everyone feels like we had way more school spirit at Garfield and we had more fun, more assemblies and all that. And now we all just feel like it's just decreased and we don't have as much fun as we did.
So those are real, like I said, I asked them to speak their minds. So, you know, even a lot of kids, there's a lot of fights. Well, since I have been assistant principal, we've had fights every year. I have seventeen years, so, you know, that's a, but between, there's nothing between the schools. It's just the general Facebook, boys dating two girls, you know, just the typical day-to-day stuff, okay, that we have to deal with. So anyways, and some of it is, you know, you talk about school spirit, is we're trying to do things. But I think over time, it'll get better and, you know, things will get better. But we'll try to address things like that, so. So that's it. That's all my, that's my presentation, so.
Does anyone have questions or comments for Principal Colleen as we get settled back in?
I'm gonna thank him for including all of the aspects of the school, and especially the voices from the students. And even the young lady who, right now, the spirit needs to be where it is. That was an honest assessment on her part, and I appreciate you including that in.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Just, just real quick, I do follow you on Facebook. I saw the post for the jazz, and I think you also posted the teachers' award recently as well. I really want Facebook to see.
And I'll say, I attended the production, Ms. Bellamy's production. I can't remember, it was Zombies, I can't remember the actual name of it. But that was one of the things that, I should have, I would have mentioned on one of the nights that we didn't have their school reflection. But it was nice to see them, and the kids were very excited. They were, they were loving every minute of it, so that was great. My question, are we gonna have a Bell concert, or?
Well, I know she's working on it, so. Follow me on Facebook, and I'll let you know when they're happening.
Do you want to?
Yes.
I really loved the piece that you showed with the football players that went to Forest. I think that that is something that I would love to see us replicate across the district. What a wonderful outreach to put young men in those kiddos' lives for people who might not have had someone attend. I know we have a lot of people step up across the city when we do that. Uncles come, or grandfathers, or just, you know, role models. But what a fantastic opportunity for those young men to get to be those role models. So that was fantastic. Thank you for that. And thanks to the coaching staff for doing that. That was great.
Colleen, I know you do a good job. I've been working with you for a long while, and things will get a lot better. And I think most of us as adults think otherwise, but kids are kids. They solve a lot of things themselves as well, so we have to have confidence in that. But your leadership, I know, will be fine. Kids continue to do the work, and kids will keep moving forward. Thank you.
I agree. And I appreciate all the work that you've done. I know, I mean, you've been a very important part of the merger from the beginning. And I know the steps that you've taken, you know, as you walked people through multiple open houses at Garfield, as we were, as we were kind of closing down that building, and the opportunities that you gave so many parents and students to come back, and then working through the summer and into this year on really bringing the kids together. So it was nice to see. And I think, I mean, there's nothing like good, honest feedback in terms of from the students hearing what they feel about the merger. And it was, it was good to hear that. So I appreciate it. Thank you. Anyone else?
I just wanted to add, thank you so very much for the culinary arts presentation tonight. If I was on chat, I would say, you know, all of you, you were doing such a wonderful job on all of the items that you allow us to share tonight. I appreciate it very much.
Well, that is a good segue. We do have some requests to address the board tonight. And so first up is Mr. David Skelly. Mr. Skelly, I know that you've addressed us before, so I know that you're well aware. Three minutes, Mr. Pendleton will give you a heads-up somehow when you're on your three minutes, so whenever you're ready. Thank you.
All right. Well, since it's the holiday season, I decided to take Dickens' Christmas Carol and kind of re-tell it tonight. So I've played a part of Ebenezer Scrooge, because last night I had a dream. I dreamt that I was visited by three ghosts, the ghosts of culinary past, future, present, and future. So as I was awakened by the ghost of culinary past, he showed me how we have transformed culinary arts over the past few years, which resulted in intensifying the skill levels our students can achieve. The ghosts reminded me of all the local, regional, and state competitions. And now, just a few years ago, Garfield was the very first, and so far only school in Ohio ever to send junior and senior all-female culinary teams to state competition. This is important, because I had seen a once-male-dominated career field explode with female participants, who now have opportunities to be just as successful as their male counterparts. It was not long after this ghost left that I got the chance to meet the ghost of culinary present. This ghost showed me how two different culinary programs successfully came together this year. This ghost reminded me that once again, we had to cut almost sixty students, because we had more students apply than we had room for. He showed me how students who will complete this program are rallying for those students that won't be able to find success in culinary arts, because it's being closed. These students are speaking enough for what they themselves have enjoyed, getting a high-quality culinary foundation right here at Kenmore Garfield. The ghosts reminded me of the college credit and industry certifications that are available to our students, which are much more in some cases than many of the other career paths at this school. But last, the journey to be the present was over, and I've sadly returned to my bed. It wasn't long after that that the ghost of culinary future arrived. She hadn't returned to the old Garfield site, where now sits a modern high school with eleven hundred students all ready to embrace their college or career pathway. Imagine a brand-new state-of-the-art culinary center with a complete commercial kitchen and inviting dining room. Through the ghost vision, I could see a thriving program, just as it is now. I could see a dining room filled with staff, parents, students, and community members enjoying the fruits of our students' labor, just as it is now. A program offering students great opportunities to advance both with college, employment, and in some cases, both. She showed me how the superintendent, along with the Board of Education, wholeheartedly supported keeping the most-attended program at Kenmore Garfield, at Kenmore Garfield. I'm sure most of us are familiar with the ending of the Christmas Carol. Scrooge has his heart changed forever. He celebrates those around him. Tonight, we are asking you to do the same. Change your heart, celebrate those who have completed this pathway, those who are currently in this pathway, and most importantly, those yet to come. The facts and statistics prove the need for the culinary program to stay here at Kenmore Garfield, not move east, not move to Ella, but to stay in the school where it succeeded in the past, where it is successful today, and where it will continue to succeed in the future. End quote, Tiny Tim, God bless us, everyone. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Skelly.
Thank you.
And next up, we have Jillian Allen. And I think Jillian has, and Cody, right? Okay. Welcome, and thank you, and welcoming.
Okay. Of course, I'd like to say, uh, good evening. My name is Cody Seaman. Thank you for the opportunity to speak to the board this evening. We're not used to public speaking, so please bear with us. We are speaking on behalf of all of the, all the students in the Culinary Arts Program at Kenmore Garfield. When we saw what was gonna happen to the Culinary Arts Program at Kenmore Garfield, we asked Chef Skelly if we could speak to Akron School Board. This program has done so much for us in terms of confidence and a road to our future success. We feel so passionate about how this program can benefit students that we are coming to you with the hope of continuing the Culinary Arts Program at Kenmore Garfield High School, so future students can achieve what we have in terms of confidence and finding future success in a career that we know will be our future. How many kids can say that they really enjoy going to their class like we do in Culinary Arts? We don't hear our friends in other programs say that. We hear so many students that wish that they could be in Culinary Arts. And it's, it's not because Chef gives us free food. He makes us pay for it. The Culinary Arts Program at both Kenmore and Garfield have always had a strong presence in terms of student interest and community support. These two communities have gone through so much and have lost part of their identities. Keeping Culinary Arts at Kenmore Garfield is something we all can embrace and support. We actually get hands-on, real-life experience and get the opportunity to experience what it's like to be in a real job, like a sous chef. We have a head start on our future. Why would you wanna do something that you don't enjoy? The students at Kenmore Garfield are crazy for Culinary Arts.
Cody Z, my name is Jillian Allen. Thank you for the opportunity to speak at the board this evening. I recently went to New York to tour the Culinary Institute of America to complete my application. I'm hoping I'll get the accepted, just like Michael Carr from 2015 did, and get to skip two classes, because I already have much knowledge and skills that I have learned from this class. She wanted to be here today, but she is busy pursuing her future at the Culinary Institute, which by the way, is the premier culinary school in America. We need to help the future students of Kenmore Garfield get the same great education and start our future as we have. For everybody here who came to support keeping the Culinary Arts Program here at Kenmore Garfield, please stand up and join together to express their belief in how this program has helped shape our future. In closing, we ask you, as the people in charge of deciding the future of the students at Kenmore Garfield High School, how can you take away the Culinary Arts Program that has been proven a college and career pathway for both communities for so long? Take a look at these students who came here to show their support and ask yourself, why are you doing this? Is it really in the best interest of the students? Thank you for your time and your willingness to reconsider the future of Kenmore Garfield Culinary Arts Program.
Jillian and Cody, Jillian and Cody, I just wanna say a quick thank you. And I know you may not be used to public speaking. You did fantastic. You have nothing to be afraid of. Great job. We have an additional request to address the board that we're gonna entertain at this time, but we are going to need to recess into executive session to do so. Those of you that are here and would like to remain are more than welcome to do so. The board is going to exit, and we are going to room 119 for this. So pursuant to Ohio Revised Code. Pursuant to Ohio Revised Code Section 121.22G1 to discuss issues involving personnel, I'm looking for a motion to recess into executive session. We have a motion and a second. Any questions or discussions before we move? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
Bravo?
Yes.
Mrs. Mansfield?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Reverend Walker?
Yes.
Ms. Walsh?
Yes.
All right. We are recessed into executive session. We will return as soon as we are finished. We are back from executive session. And we are going to head right into approval of the meeting minutes for the regular meeting on November 27, 2017. Special meeting minutes for December 6, 2017. Do I have a motion?
Second.
We have a motion and a second on the meeting minutes. Any questions, comments, or discussion on those? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Reverend Walker?
Yes.
Ms. Walsh?
Yes.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
Chabrow?
Yes.
Mrs. Mansfield?
Yes.
Superintendent's recommendation?
Mr. President, I have before me for your consideration thirty-seven personnel recommendations. These recommendations are in proper form, and I move their approval.
So move it. We have a motion and a second on the personnel recommendations. Any questions or discussion? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Reverend Walker?
Yes.
Ms. Walsh?
Yes.
Charlie Alexander?
Yes.
Chabrow?
Yes.
Mrs. Mansfield?
Yes. Yes, um, that's a statement.
Thirty-five.
Thank you.
Mr. Miller?
Yes, I'm staying with number thirty-six and number eleven. Next, Mr. President, I have before me for your consideration one motion and four resolutions on the consent agenda. These recommendations are in proper form, and I move their approval.
So move it. We have a motion and a second. I've got that. On the consent agenda, any questions or discussion? Hearing none, roll call, please. Oh, I'm sorry.
I was just curious, Ryan, we talked about the workers' comp. You said you're gonna get a prepay on that. Is that school with us?
So we're gonna prepay. Some billing issues last year with reconciling our billing every year, so we decided to go advanced billing for the next six months. However, we have filed an application with the state to be self-insured with our workers' comp as early as July. So it changes the way we do business.
That's the earliest.
That's the earliest.
Any other questions or discussion? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Reverend Walker?
Yes.
Ms. Walsh?
Yes.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
Mr. Bravo?
Yes.
Mrs. Mansfield?
Yes.
Mr. Walsh?
Yes.
And finally, Mr. President, I have before me for your consideration sixteen business affairs recommendations. I would like to point out item number thirteen, which is a memorandum of understanding between Akron Public Schools and Stark State College. We are pursuing a change of control of our School of Practical Nursing from Akron Public Schools to Stark State. This process has to be reviewed by the Ohio Board of Nursing, and our intent is that control, that change of control would occur no later than July 1st of 2018. Akron Public Schools maintains ownership of the school and will continue to admit students to the program until such time as this change of control is effective. We're not able to offer any other details until the Ohio Board of Nursing reviews the change of control, and our hope is that we will be notified sometime before February. Other than that, these recommendations are in proper form, and I move their approval. And I also like to recognize Mr. Don Mullin from Stark State, who's with us this evening.
Yes, and thank you for your partnership on this. Motion and a second?
So move it. Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any questions or comments?
I did wanna highlight item thirteen. Now, once this has been agreed by all parties, is our name still affiliated with that, or what is the?
Yes, in our conversation, we'll remain the Akron School of Practical Nursing. All right. Question number one, what is the difference gonna be between the APS forecast and OSBA forecast? That's a treasurer's. It's an annual contract. Oh. Public Finance Resources.
I'm one of business affairs recommendations with Public Finance Resources or PFR CFO. That is our annual contract that we work with and purchase their software. It's the software that I use to do our forecasting and budgeting. It's not an additional bonus, so.
Okay, got it. Thank you. And item number five, with the grant writer, how will that enhance, or will it hurt, or how does that, how will that work in conjunction with what we're already doing? This is, I believe, our second year of using Grants Plus, and they've been assisting us over that time with our grant writing and research into potential grants. Have they helped us to acquire additional grants other than what we know we have? Yes.
We actually had a report of that. We actually had a review of that, and Debbie's gonna talk about it a little bit, but I'll share this sheet that we had in our committee meeting spot about those.
And the last one, item number fifteen, can you explain it? So as part of our agreement with Palladina, we need to upgrade the space at 400 West Market that is currently occupied by Project Grad to create a health center for our employees who will be using Palladina Health. Thank you.
Just going back briefly to item thirteen, I wanted to thank everyone for all the work on finding a way to make this program continue. I know the board had quite an outcry last spring, and everyone sprung into, into work on trying to find the best solution for this program. I just wanted to recognize Mr. Mullin and thank him for, I actually got to, for, I was on facility. I was on facility for my day job, and he gave me a tour of what, if everything goes through his plan, would be the facilities that would be in use. And I know Mr. Bravo said that I'll help sort your mind on that, but it's a beautiful facility, and I'm looking forward to our students having some...
Yeah, I just want to echo that. We, you know, when... I want to give kudos to the superintendent to, you know, we challenged... This program has a legacy that nobody on this board wanted to see lost, and it was something that we were passionate about, the community was passionate about. And it's really great to see our partnership with Stark State just extend beyond, you know, what we could have thought possible even a year or two ago. And so we really do appreciate the opportunity to explore what that's going to look like in the future. And I was just, I had told Lisa that we're... I owe you an email as we figure out a date that we can get everybody together that will work to offer a tour of Stark State's facilities. And Mr. Mullen and Dr. Vera Jones have graciously extended an invitation for us to come out and see what they're doing. And so, once we have a date that works, then we'll get that scheduled and likely probably have to be after the first of the year at this point, but we'll give that out to you so that you can... And Debbie, we asked her to join us too because you were a part of that, so... Anything else on this, on business affairs? Any other questions, comments, discussion? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Ms. Walsh?
Yes.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
Mr. Bravo?
Yes.
Mrs. Mansfield?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Reverend Walker?
Yes.
All right, Superintendent's report. Okay, President's report. Again, I just want to say, you know, all the Diet Pepsi, Diet Coke jokes aside, I do want to say thank you for your service, and we're definitely going to miss you. Our next meeting will be joined, of course, by Ginger, who's a familiar face, and so we're excited to welcome her back to the board as well. It is that time of year to start thinking about committee and cluster assignments, so I'd like to ask everyone to start thinking about that now. I will send out a follow-up email, and I will also follow up with each of you individually, as well as Mr. Otterman and Ginger, so time to start thinking about that. If you have thoughts, please send me an email or a text and let me know. Again, otherwise, I will send out a follow-up email, and I will reach out to each of you individually. That is it for my report. Treasurer's report?
No report.
Committee reports legal contracts and board policy?
I have for the third final reading for approval revised policy... I'm sorry, revised bylaw 0147 compensation, revised policy 5500 student conduct, revised policy 5600 student discipline, revised policy 8800 religious/patriotic ceremony and observances, and I ask for those to be approved.
Do we have a motion?
So move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second for the final reading and approval of the one bylaw 0147 and policies 5500, 5600, 8800. Any questions or discussions? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Mr. Bravo?
Yes.
Mrs. Mansfield?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Reverend Walker?
Yes.
Ms. Walsh?
Yes.
All right. Did you call Mr. Alexander? He has the last. I'm going to call Walsh. They're lying to...
They are.
Yeah. Okay. You get everybody?
Yeah.
Okay, we're good. Finance and Capital Management?
No report.
Instructional Policy and Student Achievement?
Actually, one of the first things I want to do is recognize we have, back in the back, we have Barb Dawson and two of her teachers from the School of Practical Nursing, and I just want to welcome and recognize them and thank them for all the work they've done. And please invite me to graduation. And then, to almost answer the question that Mr. Alexander asked earlier about the Grants Plus LLC, I just wanted to let our colleagues know that our partnership with Grants Plus has been very beneficial to the district. They've assisted in numerous grant applications. This resulted in $3 million of additional funding for the district. And in particular, they supported the 21st Century Grant Center School Improvement Branch. So it has been a very, very good partnership and worked through.
Additionally, if you look at your places tonight, you'll see that you have a trifold, and there's also the standing signs up here that has some of our information on our students and families who are arriving from different countries. So our district now represents, and I even knocked the socks off the kids at Norton today with this, 63 different countries of origin, including United States. We have 42 languages represented in our districts, and we employ 25 interpreters who support our students, parents, and school staff. In addition to the trifold, we have signs highlighting our interpreting services in every school office and administrative building. The signs are designated to assist our families as we communicate with each other. One of the presentations that Debbie and I saw today was about how to get the information about the free smoke detectors that the Red Cross and the Akron Fire Department are trying to get out because of the losses we've had in after the year. And one of the highest recommendations that these students had was how to get it out to the Northville community, and every single one of their presentations involved our translators. So it's a very important service that we provide.
And lastly, you see, is also our monthly update on the college and career academy transformation, which tied in. We observed today, but a nice transition and seeing it coming to fruition. But one of the items listed is that our consultants from Board NGL will be in the district on December 19th and 20th. They'll be meeting with staff and key community partners to continue to move our college and career academy work forward. So if you're available to attend... Okay, I'm getting a nod. You want to throw that out there without... Please, see, it will be very beneficial to see what's going on out there.
Thank you.
Have Hanukkah in Quanzaa.
We need all 42, please.
I know. I'm just trying to figure out what would be the 42 different...
Okay. Any ones for the church and for the student achievement? Excellent. These are fantastic. That's phenomenal. I'm amazed every year. Any unfinished business to come before the board? Any new business to come before the board?
Yes, Mr. President. Two items there. Number one, there is a business affairs supplement, and that is to purchase a 2018 Ford Transit 10-seat passenger van from Montrose Ford for use by Transportation Services. And the next one is I'm requesting authorization to sign a second amendment to our trademark license agreement with InventNow. At the time, we did our agreement with what was formerly the National Inventors Hall of Fame Foundation. The name has changed to InventNow, and so by signing this amendment, it'll be inserted into our current trademark agreement reflecting the name change to InventNow so that we're all the... All the other terms of that agreement stay the same, which allows us to call our two STEM schools National Inventors Hall of Fame schools.
So first, we are looking for approval on the supplement to the business affairs recommendations from the superintendent. Do we have a motion?
So move. Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any questions or discussion on the van? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
Mr. Bravo?
Yes.
Mrs. Mansfield?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Reverend Walker?
Yes.
Ms. Walsh?
Yes.
And we are looking... All right, we are looking for a motion on the second amendment to the trademark license agreement with InventNow. Do we have a motion?
So move. Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any questions or discussion?
Quick question. I think you answered it, but that's not going to cause a name change to the school. So...
Any other questions or discussion? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Mr. Bravo?
Yes.
Mrs. Mansfield?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Reverend Walker?
Yes.
Ms. Walsh?
Yes.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
I was going to play a big joke on Ms. Walsh, and Lisa found me out. I was going to let her leave with a resolution that was not actually official because we never voted on it. So would anyone like to make a motion to vote on Debbie's resolution?
So move.
I appreciate that. We have a motion from Reverend Walker and a second from Bruce Alexander. We have a motion and a second. Any questions or discussion? Would you like to debate this first?
I think we both know, does she not leave?
Hearing none, roll call, please.
Mrs. Mansfield?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Reverend Walker?
Yes.
Ms. Walsh?
Is it appropriate?
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
Mr. Bravo?
How else would we get you for an ethics violation? Yes. All right. I think that is it for the regular portion, except, as many of you know, and if there is anyone that would like to come and address the board of each of these, I want to say thank you, first of all, to the superintendent, to his staff, to the principal, and to the staff here, and for everyone that came out. This year, we decided to take six of our meetings out into the community and offer them as an opportunity for the people in the community to see us and hear us and interact with us, and so that we could meet them where they are. And I think that, you know, I hope that we continue to do that. We have had some where the turnout was really great, and we've had some where there were a few. But in each case, I think it makes a difference. I think if you provide the opportunity, and then you can say that you provided that opportunity, and you do it, and you do it consistently, you know, I hope that that starts to build something out in the neighborhoods to show people that if you can't make it downtown, we're happy to come to you. We love the opportunity to see the fairs. I was running it a little late with the wrong diet, but we love the opportunity to see the fairs, the tables, to see what the kids are doing, to see what the schools and the cluster are doing. It's great for us to hear a presentation from Kenmore Garfield on the value that the kids and the staff are seeing from this merger. We hear a lot of the concerns. It's nice to see some of the kids say, maybe it's not as bad as we thought, and to see the band that they can now field and the arts that they can have and the football team and just all of the things that they're doing. So we're really appreciative. I hope that you know that, and I hope that you know that we appreciate that and that we'll continue to try and do this. With that, we do have the need to recess into executive session one more time, and we are exiting again to room 119, so if you'd like to stay, you're more than welcome. Pursuant to Ohio Revised Code Section 121.22G1 and G3 for the purposes of discussing the employment dismissal, discipline, promotion, demotion, compensation of a public employer official of the school district, and to consult with legal counsel to discuss disputes involving the board and/or the school district that are the subject of pending or imminent court action, I'm looking for a motion to recess into executive session. So we have a motion and a second to enter into executive session. Any questions or discussion? Can I suspend for one second? Any issues with me suspending the rules for one second? That whole prologue that I just gave you guys was to say that if anybody, at the end of each one of these, we offered the opportunity for the public to interact with the board. Is there anyone that would like to address the board? Anyone at all? No open mic tonight, tonight. Okay. With that, we have a motion and a second. Roll call, please.
Mrs. Mansfield?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Reverend Walker?
Yes.
Ms. Walsh?
Yes.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
Bravo?
Yes.
All right, we are recessed.